It's 6:00 PM. I'm going to do the sound check that I like to do. Let's pick on somebody, maybe Judith, if you're on. I know you're going to be presenting later. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, Mark.
Great, thank you so much.
Excellent.
All right. So this is the October 27th Concord Select Board meeting at 6:00 PM. And I see that everyone is here. So we'll begin with public comment as we normally do. Public comment is up to three minutes per person on items not on the agenda. And if you're on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and watch for a prompt to unmute yourself. Do I have any comments in the room? Don't all jump up at once, all three of you.
Right.
Okay. Great.
Already solved.
Anybody on Zoom would like to make a comment? I love it when we buy 15 minutes right up front.
There you go.
Okay. With that, we'll do the consent agenda, which is also somewhat abbreviated today.
Yeah, is there anything that anybody wanted to pull off for a discussion?
Oh yeah, it's probably worth noting that because Wendy's going to be leaving, Cameron is going to be the clerk for tonight's meeting. Thank you, Cameron.
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I am too. Shannon, with us? Shannon, I know that you were waiting on a TIP certification for the one-day liquor license. Did you get it?
So the application only came in this morning, but because of the Select Board's schedule change, I just wanted to make sure that this would be able to go forward before their event on November 15th. So I spoke with the applicant this afternoon. They said they had just contacted their bartending service and they'll get it to me this week.
Okay. So that'll be a conditional approval, assuming that they satisfy those requirements. Great, thank you.
Okay.
No problem.
So yeah, so I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda, which includes three items. Number one being the executive session minutes for approval but not release from October 20th, 2025. Number two will be the town account warrant from October 23rd, 2025. And number three will be the one-day liquor license, which will be conditional approval, pending receiving TIP certification and payment for all alcoholic beverages for Katie Stein-Fahy of Revolutionary Concord for a retirement event to be held at Revolutionary Concord, 32 Main Street on November 15th, 2025, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Select Board appointments, please.
Okay, Select Board appointments. So we're going to move to appoint the following five people. So number one will be Leah Zavalek of 44 Bradford Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee to a term to expire on May 31st, 2028. Number two will be Isabella Bailey of 121 Everett Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee for retroactive reappointment to a term from June 1st, 2024, to May 31st, 2027. That will be her second term. Number three, Mark Hanson of 340 Holdenwood Road to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee, retroactive reappointment to a term from June 1st, 2023, to May 31st, 2026, with an exemption from APP 10, Section 8B, from term limits to prevent loss of continuity and institutional knowledge. Number four will be Amy Hoey of 217 Central Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee, retroactive reappointment to a term from June 1st, 2024, through May 31st, 2027, which will be the first term. Previous term was a partial term to fill an unexpired term. And finally, Lois Suarez of 34 Everett Street, 10B, to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee, reappointment to a term from June 1st, 2025, through May 31st, 2028.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Chair's report. Couple of things, just a reminder about the traffic forum tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM in the hearing room. That'll be a joint meeting of the Traffic Advisory Committee, the Public Works Commission, and the Select Board to hear about the strategies and programming that's going along with the roads program, which was recently passed. We're looking forward to that. I know that there are quite a few citizens who are also interested in that. And so I'm looking forward to seeing you all there. The MCI Advisory Board will be meeting with representatives from the Division of Capital and Asset Management from the state on November 3rd. And I'm recommending that we notice that as a Select Board meeting as well, so that we can all participate and, you know, have a firsthand discussion about that dialogue that's going to go on about the future of MCI. That is Monday at noon for two hours till 2:00 PM in this room next Monday. I'm going to ask Kristen to distribute the spring. Oh, I'm sorry, that, we'll get to that, the spring meeting dates for discussion, because I realize that we need to probably approve our calendar of meetings. We're going to really work hard this spring. I know that town meeting introduces some additional meetings, but to try to have our cadence be every other week and not do these back-to-back weeks, because I think it's difficult on staff. It doesn't really allow much recycle time. And then when we create these three-week blocks, we also get into some of the things, like, for example, the two things that were laid adds to tonight's agenda were things that were we meeting next week as scheduled, as we had originally planned to meet. They would have gotten in here, been on the calendar. We would have had time to review. And so we're going to really try and see that. So we're going to distribute that, and I'll be looking for comments on it, but we'll nail that down at our meeting on the 17th. And the last thing I wanted to just briefly touch on is, we have a couple of meetings that are related to the town meeting schedule coming up. The one on November 20th, the Finance Committee is reviewing capital programs. This is something that was recommended by the Capital Planning Task.
Yeah, yep.
It's called. Thank you. And that meeting last year was not very well attended. The idea was that the schools and the town would be presenting long-term capital outlooks, and the public would have an opportunity to comment on it. And then on our agenda for Monday, November 8th, which is two meetings out from now, we would then also have a joint meeting with the School Committee and the Finance Committee and see a presentation again on the same thing. And the Chair of the Finance Committee has raised the question about exactly what the, whether that's the most efficient use of time. I know Wendy looked into it a little bit and might have an opinion, but I wanted to put it out there that we may or may, we may want to adjust exactly how that's approached.
Yeah, the December 8th is the tri-board meeting, right? Which is the first formal one. November 20th, Carrie actually already provided capital detail plan, but the School Committee did not. So I think on November 20th, the FinCom should listen to the School Committee's presentation, but that's, I think, up to FinCom to confirm that.
Yeah, I'm inclined to, you know, defer to the discretion of the FinCom Chair to decide, you know, exactly what the content of that meeting is, given that, you know, some 10 days later or so, we'll be meeting again to hear those more formalized plans.
Yep.
Does anybody have any concern about that?
No, last year at the equivalent of the November 20th meeting, which, as you said, was an opportunity for the public, no one was, there were no comments from the public.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that the
So I don't think
The general, how to engage the public in long-term capital planning thinking is maybe something that that task force was interested in, but we haven't really figured out exactly what to do to capture the public interest on that subject, let's say.
But you're not, you're not thinking of changing the December 8th?
No.
That is still going to be the
No, I'm just, I'm just suggesting that maybe November 20th is best left to the FinCom to work through their guideline process and their recommendations, and then we can all come back in. I think December 8th is plenty of time to be talking long-term capital. Okay. So if those are, if nobody has any other questions for the chair, then we can move on.
Yeah, just, Mark, for clarification, is the 17th of November also the tax hearing?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's within the Select Board meeting, but it is a separate
Right, yeah, that's the tax rate hearing. So that, that's going to be, you know, energetic evening. There's, off the top of my head, I'm not remembering exactly what the other thing is that's on there, but there's a couple of pretty lengthy topics. Oh, I know what it is. We're going to be, we're going to be hearing in some detail about the Town Manager's operating budget on that evening as well. So
Ah, okay.
because that, we were going, that was actually going to happen on November 3rd, and then we moved up, and then she's, Terry's at a conference this week.
Okay.
And I know that we attentively talked about revisiting APP 10 because of the Finance Committee changes on that date, but I've been in contact with the moderator, and she's perfectly okay with us pushing that.
Pushing that off?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think there's going to be plenty to do. Okay. Any other questions? Town Manager's report, Megan?
Good evening. On Friday evening, there was, our public safety team responded to an accident in the area of Old Marlborough Road in Hunter's Ridge. And I just wanted to mention that that did result in a power outage that affected about 18 homes. Our CMLP crews worked overnight, and power was restored on Saturday morning. As mentioned earlier, we do have our delegation visitors coming from NINI this evening. We're really looking forward to welcoming them. They will be coming back to the townhouse tomorrow morning around 8:30, and they'll be, they'll be meeting here before they kick off a full tourist day in town in Concord. So thanks to our Tourism Division for helping plan the day, along with the, I think, you know, close collaboration with the CNN Network, the School Department. It's been, I think it's been a collaborative process to welcome these visitors, so we're looking forward to having them.
How many folks will be here about, or?
There's nine students, one teacher, and a town representative.
So one of the things we're going to do is show them the gifts that the town has received over the years. We have them displayed in a few different areas on this floor and downstairs, and talk about some of our archiving and things of interest. So looking forward to that. One project announcement we have is that construction has begun. We're scheduled to begin today on the long-planned accessibility entrance improvements at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. This work includes repairs to the parking lot entrance, the front ramp, and the east-side stairs. So this project is expected to take six to eight weeks, but all Council on Aging programming will continue as scheduled. So the main entrance will shift to the auditorium side during, during some of the construction. But there will be some accessible parking temporarily relocated to the west side of the lot near the Carousel Preschool. So, you know, if you see some activity happening there, things are still open, but, so please feel free to come in, but it's going to be much improved afterwards. We did record a podcast on, talking about the Council on Aging. I might have mentioned that last week, but the next episode will be coming out this week, and that is an interview with the CMLP Director Jason Bulger, which is kind of a deep dive on the time of use rates, which is a topic that's coming up a lot lately.
Great.
Check that out if you subscribe. Mark already mentioned two of our outreach or public engagement opportunities, but just to reemphasize, tomorrow evening at 4:00 in the hearing room, there's the meeting between the Select Board, Public Works Commission, and Transportation Advisory Committee. And this forum is planned to discuss roadway investments and how the town will collect and prioritize public input. And then, of course, on November 19th, there's two public workshop sessions for the Comprehensive Transportation Study, one at the morning at Kaas Road, one in the evening at Harvey Wheeler. So the goal is to hear from residents on pedestrian access, bicycle traffic, parking, transit, and other broader mobility needs. Finally, I wanted to mention that we did receive a complaint about stockpiling materials at 1175 Elm Street, which is a town-owned CMLP property. I wanted to mention to the board and the public that in November of 2022, the town entered into an access agreement to allow a contractor, MIG Corporation, the ability to temporarily store materials on that property for a period of approximately 36 months. And the material storage is related to the MassDOT project in Acton. So in conjunction with Town Council, we're actively reviewing this item and in process of terminating the license that was granted by the Town Manager at the request of CMLP. And we do recognize that the terms of the license have unfortunately not been adhered to, but we are looking to work with Town Council to end that agreement. I also just want to mention, we encourage the public to subscribe to our newsletter, Concord Currents. There's an addition that just went out this afternoon, and you can sign up by going on our town webpage. And I think that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay.
Thanks for the update.
And just, for people who might not know that by the address, that's the, just behind the gas station, right off the rotary, is the area of the stockpile. Okay.
I'm next, too.
You are?
Yes. Yes, I'm filling in, filling in this evening to discuss the project approval request. This is a gift in naming of town property, and it's really about the placement of a teak bench along the Shoba Brook. So, you know, Mimi's been before the board, I think, a number of times to talk about how the community is looking at siding benches, funding benches through gifts and donations. And so this project before you this evening is from Shawna Lowe, who wishes to donate $1,200 to provide a bench in memory of her mother, Cynthia, who's a former resident of Concord Green. This contribution fully covers the purchase and installation of a bench, including a personalized donor plaque. And the location is a grassy area overlooking the Shoba Brook, near the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, behind Brookside Square. So a formal agreement for placement of the bench has been secured with the property owners. And the memo in your packet also outlines several other of the bench sites that have been progressing through various gifts and donations in the past year or so, including locations for benches and for a bike rack.
So just to be clear, this is a site that we've already
That's right.
... reviewed and approved.
Yeah.
Yes.
So this is, yeah, I just want to make, for those listening
Yes, thank you. I should have said that.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's not, it's, here's a place that we already sort of
That's right.
It would be a great place for a bench.
There's been an interest in adding more benches in the community, and this is specifically in West Concord. And so instead of just having an ad hoc kind of benches here, benches there, there was a strategic approach to identify where they would be suitable and, you know, to meet our objectives of pedestrian and, you know, economic vitality. So this has been an area that has been located, and the donation covers the bench and installation.
Right. My recollection is that the reason this didn't come forward with the rest was because we did need to negotiate an agreement with a private property owner for the placement. And, great.
Yeah, it's a great location.
It is a great location.
Get a lot of use, it's really wonderful.
Yeah.
So.
Walkability and restability.
Absolutely.
Right, right. They're related.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'm going to move to approve a gift in the amount of $1,200 given by Shawna Lowe, which will cover the purchase, installation, and a personalized plaque for a bench, the naming of town property as described, and the placement of the teak bench along the Shoba Brook as described.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
I would just like to thank Shawna for this gift. I think it's a wonderful way to memorialize our parents.
Yeah, it's great.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll add my thanks to Shawna Lowe as well. Okay.
Wow.
So we're
Moving right along.
We are moving right along.
Right along.
And yet, we, okay, so we're already up to the, to the Land Use Working Group. Welcome, Sven.
We have Judith online.
Judith?
All right, so you have 25 minutes ahead of schedule. I can, we both can easily fill it.
No doubt.
Did we mention the Japanese guests are arriving this evening?
We did.
No pressure. So just, as you know, you seeded and established the Land Use Working Group effectively starting in July. We had a very, very busy summer. Although it was vacation time, the Land Use Working Group was extremely busy. And before I go into the details, just want to thank everyone who was here, for specifically Town Staff. We had a lot of requests, we had a lot of tours, we looked at buildings, we needed information. We were just doing a lot. And sometimes I feared we were overwhelming people with all the work. As you know, two work group members resigned because the workload was more than they expected. But we found great replacements, so that is all up and running. Just to summarize it, not only for you, but also generally for the public, the Land Use Working Group structured itself in three subgroups to look at three distinct areas of work. One is the subgroup looking purely on public works campus, what to do with it, should it stay, should it move, and when, where. The second subgroup is looking at fire and police, what is the situation there, what are the options? And again, is what can be done with the fire and police buildings, what are the needs, and what are potential solutions? And the third subgroup is what we call the consolidation, municipal consolidation subgroup. Is there opportunity, given that the town has about 18 different locations, to consolidate that and be in one way more efficient in the work processes, and the other way, free up properties that could be used for other uses or could be sold and put on the market? So these are the three working groups. In the last three months, we all collected a lot of information on the different properties, on population growth, and on demands and what is needed, on cost structures. I think that the cost side is still, there's still work to be done, depending on what different options are. Also, we are still collecting information, what are market values of the different properties, because assessed value and a market value are completely different things, so that we have a full understanding on if we are freeing up property, what could we achieve either by selling it or renting it out? That we have a full view of the different options. We are in official phase one, what, the phase one of the charter, but we subdivided the phase one of the charter, which looks at these, these three areas in three kind of sub-timeframes. Unfortunately, we also call them phase. So just, we are getting to the end of the, of the first sub-phase, where a lot was focused on, on information collection. And now the work groups, the sub-work groups also start working at the different options and laying the options against the metrics of valuation, that we have for each of these different work groups, a way to, to measure and judge in the end, what are the options that have a higher opportunity value, easier to realize than others, and then can, in the last phase, then in the end, bring all of these together and being able to give options back to you as a Select Board with the pros and cons of, let's say, a very small amount of options, instead of all the different puzzle pieces that we have in front of us. I often compare this to a puzzle. It's massive. I would say where we are today is in the phase similar to how you solve a puzzle, where you sort the puzzle pieces and you start putting the frame out. And this is where we are at the moment. We sorted the puzzle pieces, we're still not sure if we have all together, but we are starting to put the frame out and then work our way into it. It's too early to communicate any preferences. I think we should give the group the time to really analyze and get an understanding. We learn still today, ongoing over the last weeks, we have ongoing information coming in that might change the view of certain options. So we have to give the group the time. And nothing is, is more problematic than to, to early communicate which scenario and which option would be a preferable one or not. So I would just encourage you to be patient. And also, when the group is discussing options and scenarios, that doesn't mean that these are the ones that in the end are the ones that are recommended. You need to have a discussion, you need to look at the pros and cons, but that, don't jump to conclusion that if we discuss option A, that this will be the one that the group will recommend. So you read the report, some of you are part of it, but I'm sure you have questions. And Judith is also online. It's great to have Judith as a co-chair. I think we both work very well together here. Judith brings a lot of knowledge of that area, and I'm always amazed at how quickly she can organize the things and help us to sort the pieces of the puzzle.
Before we field questions, I just want to put some detail on what you said in thanking the support staff. There's been a lot of staff that helped us. The fire and police chiefs, Alan Cathcart, Russ Carlstedt, Megan Zamuto, Meredith Stone.
Shannon.
Shannon, and just a lot of people who've spent a lot of time feeding the data.
Yeah.
It's a very data-intensive effort, as you said.
Yes.
So I just want to thank everybody.
Great.
Yeah, so I'll jump in if it's okay. I mean, so first of all, thank you for the update. I think, totally agree, like, get fact-based first, right? Then what are the options? Just what are the potential scenarios? Then you can get into sort of pros, cons, and choices. I'm curious, just on the approach, so you talked about these, Public Works, Public Safety, Municipal Consolidation. There's also sort of, I think, a set of analysis around, like, what will you do with the land that isn't Public Works, Public Safety, and Municipal Consolidation? Like, will you build housing? Will you build sports facilities? Will you do, whatever, right? There's a whole bunch of choices there. So I'm just curious, approach-wise, are you first solving for, like, okay, let's figure out Public Works, Safety, and Municipal Consolidation, and then separately, and secondly, once we've solved for that, here's the remaining land? And what, what do we think we would want to do with that remaining land? Or does what you do with that remaining land influence?
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So is it like a one-step, two-step, or is it like
If you look, if you look at the charter, in a certain way, the charter had defined it as a two-step approach. What you already see is that you cannot 100% separate these things out, because if you're looking in scenarios where you would free up a certain amount of land with a certain acreage, in a decision what to do there is the decision, okay, if you would do that for housing and the town would zone it correctly and sell it, what can the town achieve versus perhaps build on the land?
Yep.
And, and so you cannot 100% separate it. The charter was to do it one first and then the other.
So you do the first one, then you kind of have to iterate?
Yeah, but
Say, okay, this creates this.
But you're already collecting the data, and I know for, for at least some of the work that is done specifically in the consolidation group is, you have to look at that scenario. What does it mean? You use the land or you sell it? You free up something? What, what does it bring? And what criteria? Sometimes you get perhaps a piece of land which is zoned, residential. Sometimes you get perhaps a piece of land which is zoned residential double A. Would it make sense? There's a different price tag you can achieve if it's residential double A versus if it's zoned residential B? Because the developer can build to another density. So these are the things we have to have in mind when we compare that. And so you can't not hundred percent do it. But I think the phase one is focused on prioritizing the options, identifying and prioritizing the options for the three buckets I said. And already getting information along the way that helps us in the following phase. And correct me if I'm wrong, Judith.
Well, I was gonna say, Judith, you have some experience in doing this, right? Does that all?
It's all sequencing.
I can jump in very briefly and corroborate Sven's impressions, but also his, Sven's the master of analogy. So I'm loving this puzzle analogy that he rolls out. I think one of the things that I've been mentioning when I talk to people about this work is that the committee has only been established for a year. And the town doesn't really have, at this stage, it has in the past, but at this stage, it doesn't really have a longer-term land management strategy. And part of what's sort of creeping into the charge is the idea that we would be answering all kinds of questions about the future of land use in the town. And I think we have to put some boundaries around the scope of what it is the committee is really reasonably able to do in the space of a year. And that's really dictated by the availability of certain large parcels and the timing around certain large parcels. So the process really isn't comprehensive in the sense that we're looking at all of the land use planning issues in the town of Concord in a year with no consulting support, because I think that's a little bit unreasonable. But instead, what we're trying to do is look at these transformative parcels that are all arriving sort of uniquely during a ten-year period and to try and sort out the opportunities. And to be mindful of not only the municipal facilities' needs, some of which are urgent, some of which are less so, but also broader landscape, broader land use issues. But just trying to put some bounds around it because there are some limits to what a group of ten volunteers can do over the course of a year.
So Sven, I have one question. The evaluation matrix, you've got three different groups, and you've got three different sets of evaluation. Do you use the same criteria in each of the three buckets in terms of evaluating your options?
Judith, perhaps you're the master of the evaluation metric.
Is that, I guess my question, is that your intent?
No, no, so that's a great question. So the evaluation matrix, I mean, you know, it kind of sounds like a fancy term. And certainly in land use work, it's not unusual to use a table, right? Like a matrix is just a fancy word for a table. And the idea that, say, if you're looking at a public safety building, the evaluation criteria are things like, obviously, cost. Cost is going to loom large in any of the different subgroups. But also things like response time, you know, the ability to create a working environment that's suitable to the function of the police and fire staff, the ability to do external training in the spaces around the building, so on and so forth. And then if you were looking at municipal consolidation, the metrics become a little bit different. Again, of course, cost is a factor. But there are efforts to try to measure efficiency improvements. So one of the challenges, obviously, with being somewhat dispersed around town is that if one of the staff members wishes to speak with another staff member, and sometimes that engagement is more productive when it's done in person, they're not able to do that if they're on different sites throughout the town. So there are operational efficiencies that can be improved through consolidation. Travel time can be improved. Employee satisfaction can be improved through provision of newer, nicer spaces. So there's, you know, sort of different evaluation criteria for each of the different categories.
I mean, it makes sense. Police and fire have certain turnaround times that they must meet, right? There's certain regulatory requirements in certain areas that wouldn't have gone up.
There are certain things that are the same cost as one of them.
Right, yeah, revenue, yeah.
One thing that is also important to understand in all the different options and all the different buckets is the timelines. Although we look at them right now at the same time, it's very easy to imagine that the different options that are necessary need to be implemented at the same time that you're showing. What can be done, when, when is which opportunity? And also, again, from a cost slash capital budget, when can the town afford doing significant projects?
Judith, I heard your statement about, we only have a year, and you worried a little bit about scope creep. So I'm gonna ask a question, whether you think this is something that the working group can answer or not? And let me tell you where I'm coming from. Obviously, some of the recommendations that you might bring to us at the end will require, will propose maybe selling some property and using it for housing or open space. And one of the questions we hear a lot are, what is the impact on services for those types of recommendations? So is it realistic for us to expect that we would have some order of magnitude or some better understanding of the impact on services, specifically schools, when it comes to some of these options that you may or may not be recommending?
That's a great question, Mary. And I actually think that's one aspect of the work that we can deliver in the coming year, mainly because there are consultants that are available to do this kind of work. It's relatively routine and it's, I mean, I won't say it's low cost, but it's not extraordinarily expensive to do these kinds of impact studies. And in fact, Sven, I believe it was a very kindly intended neighbor of Sven's who brought us a similar report that was done for Lexington with regard to some of their new friendly 40B developments and the impact on school, on emergency services. And as well, I think they had some water and sewer calculations in there as well. So I think we will be able to capture some of those impacts, Mary, largely through the engagement of a consultant.
Yeah, and I just want to add that there is a significant amount of raw data available. The work is to bring the raw data together. And Judith and I, we were sitting together and we did kind of our own analysis. But in the end, it's better to have a professional checking and looking and seeing, is this professionally reconfirmed or not? And that's important because you want, and these are decisions that in the end will require millions and millions of dollars of capital investments. And if, say, I run some numbers, Judith runs some number, or another workgroup person runs some numbers, everyone comes in with a certain bias. And you can tweak the numbers in one or the other direction. So I think some part of the budget we have available, we will have to use to take the raw data we have, complement it potentially with additional data, and make a comprehensive view about that. So, and that will not only help this group. This helps, as I said, student numbers help the town for a lot of other things when you look at budgeting. It helps for a long-term view of what is needed on capacity for fire and police and also public works. What is needed in long-term capacity for other town functions? So you, that you get a much better view over and above just the land use. And that, I think it's an important part.
Right.
And I believe the town, after the work of this group, should look in how, assuming we are able to do these studies and the numbers, how to continually, continuously maintain that? Because things change. You might get a 40B more or 40B less. So what does it then mean if you suddenly, perhaps, one of the 40Bs is not built? So that, right now, we can generate a snapshot of the knowledge that is there today. But things over time change. So that would be probably one thing you, from a select board perspective, have to think is, has the town, the capacity and the functions to continue to have long-term planning functions, real planning functions? I think the town today is very much focused on permitting, less planning with respect to population growth and other things.
So can I ask a follow-up question? And then I'm done. I agree with you that data is a great way to make decisions. And I know that you've got some budget to get some of the work done. I think you've got, how much money?
I think it's hundred fifty K.
Hundred fifty K. Now compare that to the four hundred K that the MCI advisory board. So you've got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've got, you've already identified some data needs that you have. We, on the municipal consolidation, also know that we think we need some studies done on one of the sites that's in our portfolio of possible consolidation sites. But I guess my question is, bottom line, do you have enough money? Or do you think that we should be considering? Because remember, for MCI, we put in a request.
We've already spent seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on MCI.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm not saying that you want to.
Just saying.
Just saying.
Fortunately, state provided money, but.
But we put, we had, if you remember, we put a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar free cash recommendation. So I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. You might want to.
Just, of course, you can always throw more money behind this. I think it's here we have to be smart. At the moment, I believe, let's keep it at a hundred fifty. If Judith and I see over the work, there is significant more on studies to do than we think.
Yep.
This is a discussion we can have at that moment. It's good, I also have, always be a fan of have limited resources because it enforces discipline and not just.
Scope.
Right.
Defining the scope.
Right.
Defining the scope and priorities. That you're not saying, oh, we have the money, we can throw a consultant to it.
No, let me be clear. I wasn't saying for this effort, because you had just said that we need further effort, right? Even after this is done?
After that.
Yes, we need to have work done where we update some of this, that we look more planning, and I think Judith said that as well. So I'm just saying that this might be something that we should be having, dedicating more resources.
So maybe that's an FY twenty-seven thing that we really should be talking about? Potential, a placeholder.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
That's for next year budget.
Yeah, right.
And there's clearly an intersection here. And what we're discovering is the kind of detailed planning for a complicated site, MCI being fifty acres and quite complex, you know, can consume some resources. So I think we're learning something about what services are available there. And that could inform what kinds of things we might need to do with some of these other, especially the larger sites, as we get into designing a purpose for them. I'm gonna give you another analogy. I feel like this is a little bit like that kid's game, the Towers of Hanoi. You know, where you have to pile the discs without making a big one go on top of a small one? Because there is a lot of potentially interlocking steps that need to take place in order to execute a program like this. And I think that the output is, in the end, a program that's designed to meet these goals. The goals being try and find, you know, some efficient municipal consolidation. And how do we deal with the deficiencies that we have in the public works and public safety facilities, really?
And I have to be clear that, given it's one year and the massive scope of the task, is we will, at the end, give, only be able to give the options in order of magnitudes of what it means of the cost? And an outline of the timeline. Because then it's up to you as a select board to say, okay, these are the options we like, these are the timelines. But then there needs to be more work to be done. So if we're coming and saying a new fire station will cost X, this is order of magnitude. This is not a spec fire station.
Right, right, yeah.
Yeah.
So as you've gone down this, oh, sorry, go ahead, Paul.
I've got another analogy.
Is this a competition?
Yes, yes.
This is like Tetris. Because the pieces keep changing and moving. And you have to interlock. But I want to just talk to the, kind of, the future planning. The more I think about this, what this effort is going to lead to is going to point to some very specific units to plan for, specific buildings or properties. And maybe that'll be part of a big planning effort, but it's going to very specifically say, we need to plan for a number of things, very specifically. So that next line of planning is going to be almost specified by the outcome of.
Yes.
We call it the residual properties, the ones that are going to be left over and we can sell and lease or do something with. But you're right, the follow-up study really is to take the recommendations and to vet those and actualize those. That's gonna be the major, tangible piece of work coming out of this. So we'll have.
It's gonna take money.
So we'll have to think about how to tee that up.
So, and this group can only take both of those so far. I think they can point to the planning needs very specifically. But that'll be, and there may be, and look at two-two-two-nine main site, that's gonna require some of its own plan.
Projecting also.
And other sites will require some of the planning.
Cameron.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna, not an analogy. No, sorry, I couldn't think of one. But no, I was just gonna ask, I mean, you're several months into this now, right? You've been doing some data, gathering some fact-based building. Is there anything that's, you've learned that's surprised you? Is there anything that you've learned that's like, oh, wow, that's a big thing that, you know, we should really be sort of aware of? Are you still kind of gathering, I know? But just didn't know if there's anything that's jumped out at the team that's.
Yeah, I, one thing is, it's good to tour buildings. And if you, those select group members, we haven't had a chance to look at some of the buildings, I would only encourage to do so. I was very surprised by the West Concord Fire Station. That's me, Sven, speaking in that sense. But I feel that the rest of the group had a similar sense about that.
What surprised you about that?
I was estimating the desperation, let's say, that way, that this building generates. Specifically knowing where the heat map is and where fire and police today in West Concord have a significant amount of action. And then knowing that 40B projects are coming, knowing MCI is coming. And this is one which I personally always thought, okay, there's a nice cute fire station.
Cute.
But not nice. And definitely not usable in the use the town needs. So that's one area. Another one, I think, is we have to wait a bit for potentially the consultant to reaffirm where the population trend is. But I think perhaps the town might be overestimated in how, what's going on with the population and the potential impact of new units, apartment units to the schools. But we have to see that.
When should we expect that you will be ready to tell us about your next progress milestone?
So by a charter, we have to report every quarter.
Yeah. You're feeling good about that?
I think it's given that we have Thanksgiving and Christmas coming. If you look, the next quarter is end of January. There's not a lot of time in between anyway.
Yeah.
So we should be realistic, that we should not accelerate the things there.
No, 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 I guess, I was gonna ask about the West Concord Fire Station because I didn't tour the West Concord Fire Station. Is it in more dire straits than Concord? I'm seeing shaking, but I just.
I'll answer that a little bit, just for firsthand knowledge. Ironically, the West Concord Fire Station is the most recently renovated building that we're operating for public safety because those that remember a few years back, it burned.
Right.
Got an insurance-funded complete renovation. However, that didn't change anything about the size of it, which was insufficient at the time.
You still can't get a new truck in there, right?
Still remains so. So it's. Still remains so. So it's, it's kind of, I know, I think Alan's fond of quoting me. Was one day I observed that, you know, we didn't get here by design, we got here by evolution. And there's a
Yes.
The, the, the facilities that we use are the facilities that we have. And that's, you know, leaves something to be desired. So this is an, an effort to say, okay, if we could do a design that moves us in a, in a forward direction, what do we get? But, so it's a, it's a, it's a building in good condition that's insufficient for its purpose is, don't let me put words in your mouth, but I think that's exactly what's true about it.
Can, can I add to that? Because I did a lot of surprises. I did a tour of almost every building here, which has been a real eye-opener. But one of the things that surprised me is the amount of paper we have. We have so much paper and so much of our space is taken up with paper. Just that surprised me.
Yeah.
Digitized.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Well, it sounds like you're all, you're all knee-deep still in data and sorting out the data. And patience is a virtue, so we'll hold tight. But we're eager.
Paper's like parchment.
At least there's not flies, let me just tell you. I've been in that situation. Paper flies.
Thank you.
It's great. Well, thank you for all of you. It's a lot of work.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Sven.
So there's, there's no action that we need to take on that report at the moment. I think the next thing that we were going to cover is the cell coverage. Megan and.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to invite Ivan Page from IDK Communications to join me. Yeah, you can sit here. So if you can pull up the slides, Kristin. So good evening. Happy to be here before you this evening to talk about one of the select board goals for FY26, which is West Concord Cell Service Improvement. If you could pull up the slides instead, actually. I was trying to decide between a memo and some images, so I did both. But I thought.
Graphics are good.
A little bit wonky on the PDF, so apologies for that. But if you could go to the next slide. You know, this, this cell service has been a select board goal for a number of years. And I pulled, I pulled back some of the past few years where there were specific select board goals related to cell infrastructure, 23, fiscal 23, 25, and 26. There's a few other FY26 cell service goals, but today I'm mostly talking about West Concord. If you could go to the next slide. So reliable cell service remains a significant public safety, quality of life, and economic issue in Concord. This is not a surprise. This is why the board has prioritized this year after year. Gaps in coverage continue to affect residents, businesses, visitors, and schools, especially in three areas. Concord Center, the Route 2 Concord-Carlyle High School area, and West Concord. So two years ago, we had a listening session in October of 2023. We have the slide deck and the recording on the town's cell webpage, if anyone's interested in looking at it. It has a lot of the history of how we got to where we are today, some of the zoning, some of the, you know, number of decisions that have been made in the past. But today, I'm, I'm not getting into that level of detail. But at the, at that listening session, residents came online and in person to talk about their frustrations about cell service. And their, the areas that they mentioned in a survey and in, at the meeting really matched what our radio frequency analysis showed, that those are the three main areas. The center, the high school, Route 2 area, and West Concord. So our strategy really is to, has been to partner with private carriers and infrastructure vendors to host equipment on municipal property. We're doing a few other things. We're looking at zoning, you know, we're trying to tackle this in a few different ways. But, you know, I've been saying at a few other meetings, if carriers were going to partner with private property owners, that would be fine with us. And it could be a mutually beneficial arrangement. The property owners could, you know, receive funds for that, for that lease, and, and we'd all receive coverage and that would be fine. But we haven't, we have some of those partnerships in town, but when we're really looking to be proactive right now, we are looking at what do we own as a municipality? And how can we make that attractive for carriers so that they can improve coverage in our community?
So is there something that, I mean, do other towns have more private partnerships? And is there something that causes Concord to not
Yeah, doesn't.
Have them? Like what?
There's a number of things, I would say. I think one is our reputation. We have, we have had some, you know, kind of decisions in the past that we have not moved forward on projects when we said we were planning to. I think our historic districts can be a factor in siting locations. We also do have a number of wetlands with all of our rivers. I mean, that's kind of a sighting concern. We, what else would you add, Ivan?
Yeah, no, I, I know, I think you hit it. You hit the, the highlights, the top, the top.
I think when it, when it started here, when, when this, when this technology started in the 90s, there, the community was concerned about health impacts as well. And so the, the siting and the zoning was designed around limited, the, limiting the locations where infrastructure could exist. And so we're kind of living in that, that reality while technology continues to change and finding locations that are suitable for folks.
One of the, one of the other challenges actually too is, there's been a lot of auctions over the years by the federal government. More, more frequencies have been auctioned off. You've had multiple players, carriers come in. It's not just one carrier, there's multiple carriers. A lot of the structures where carriers have cited in Concord don't accommodate multiple carriers. One carrier gets in, a church steeple, for instance, there's no room for somebody else. So that, that's the challenge versus a traditional monopole type arrangement.
And we have that zoning too, right?
Zoning.
Yeah, and I, and I think, yeah, zoning is, is an issue. And it mostly that it's not written in a way that is extremely friendly for businesses to, to come here and spend a lot of money on designing things. You know, when you have to go through a special permit process with, with a lot of, you know, you have to prove this and this and this. It, it, it just doesn't look like do, you know, Concord, do you really want to move in this direction? So that's, that's one of the, one of the factors, yes.
Megan, that's true whether it's a municipal site or a private site.
Right, that's right.
Zoning is zoning, right.
So we're, so we're looking to, you know, kind of take that on ourselves and be proactive and, and, you know, there's, we still have to look at zoning as well. But we can, you know, we're hearing, we're hearing from the community that they, that they really want to see some progress made here. And if we own the parcels that we're looking at, we have site control, you know, we can listen to considerations from residents and have the ultimate say. And, you know, what is a suitable project for Concord? And I'm going to go into a couple projects. If you can go to the next slide, Kristin. Oh, no, the, one above that, sorry. I didn't talk about this one yet. So I, you know, I've talked about this a few times here, but for, you know, I'll just go over it briefly. We are moving forward, you know, we identified three areas. We are moving forward at, with two projects in Concord Center. One is Verizon Infrastructure that will go in the cupola of the Umbrella Building. And that is going to improve coverage for Verizon customers. As Ivan just mentioned, you know, that only fits one carrier. So that, that's one solution there. So there are more than one carrier, of course. And this, this board approved a small cell installation for AT&amp;T on Sudbury Street, two different sites. One Sudbury Street and 143 Sudbury Street. This is just one example of the poll that they put in the application. So those two projects for those two carriers are moving forward in, in a center. The next one.
What, what can be done to make them happen as quickly as possible? Like are there rate-limiting factors that we can accelerate? Or is there anything either the select board or the town can do to?
No, it's a great question. I appreciate that. I think for the small cell, they're starting to work on permitting. And I think for, for the Verizon one, they will be moving towards permitting in the, probably early 2026. I'll say for the Umbrella, we're working closely with, with the Umbrella Academy. And they have been excellent partners. We, we just got construction drawings for the plans for how the wires are actually going to go through the building. And so we're working closely with the, with the executive director over there. Because, you know, it's going to have some input on how the wires are going from the top to the electrical room in the basement, and then back to the roof for the ground-mounted unit. So there's going to be some construction and we're working closely there. But I guess for how, how folks can support this, I think when it comes to permitting times, there, there may be an opportunity for letters of support from this board and others. Since this is, this is a town goal, a select board goal, I imagine the boards you appoint would be, would be interested in this. And, you know, would be looking at these applications through that lens. And so we'll let you know when, when things are coming to a public comment period. Absolutely.
How complex is the permitting process? How many bodies in town need to permit these?
What'd you say? I mean, it, it depends on which, where it's going. You know, the Umbrella is inside. It is so, it's, and it's not in a historic district. So that kind of takes a few things off the table. It still has to go through zoning. But when we're talking about.
Zon, ZBA?
Yes, the zoning board of appeals. When we're talking about some of the other projects, like if you go to the next slide, the landfill. You know, this is, this will require additional permitting approvals. It's, there, there's some state approvals, there's local approvals. So, I mean, how many and how long? I, I think it depends on the project. And, and really, it's on the applicant to navigate that. And we try to support them throughout the path that they, that they go through, but.
It's, it's on, it's on the applicant. The applicant has to do their due diligence. They have to, you know, fill out all the paperwork, have all the proper information, check all the boxes. You know, submit and then.
So it seems each site and each location has a specific permitting roadmap.
Right.
Yep, got it.
And the fact that at the landfill, it's a tower and they're doing their due diligence to get carriers in advance, right?
Right.
To move forward. So that should really move that process along in terms of content.
That is a multi-town.
Right.
That's right.
Multi, yeah.
Provider site.
And they're working on subleases right now for four carriers. And, and those need to be really in place before they are going to begin the full permitting. I think they, they felt confident, Wireless Edge, who was in, to speak with you, I think last year or in the spring. They felt confident that this was an attractive site and had gotten interest from, from carriers. So they, you know, I think sometimes they have to test the market a little bit, but in this case, they felt like that was going to result in, you know, positive subleases. So they were moving forward. And I check in, I check in with all these guys and ask what we can do, you know, on a regular basis. But this one is moving forward as well. This, and the landfill, I, I just want to mention, really came about this time. It's been considered in the past. But there was a citizen's petition and, and, you know, that went to town meeting. It was approved overwhelmingly to ask, you know, the select board to, to encourage staff to work on this. So through that effort, we are, we are going to see coverage in this area.
Good reminder.
Yeah. And so the next slide here, yeah, now we're focusing on West Concord. And so with projects moving forward at the center and at the landfill, we're, you know, really trying to turn attention to West Concord to find a solution for improving carry, for improving coverage here. I want to mention that there are carriers in West Concord that exist. You know, we do have T-Mobile, which is at Emerson and Baker Avenue. We have Verizon and AT&amp;T that are on, under Snake Hill. And then all three carriers, T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T are, I think I already said that, Emerson Hospital. I might have said that twice. But those are the spots. So there, there is infrastructure there. I think hearing from people, it's not as bad as some of the other weaker spots in town. You know, I think the center, everyone agrees, is, is really, needs significant improvement. We've heard from parents at the high school on Route 2. But we are also hearing from people from West Concord. And so this is, this is, you know, a reason why we want to address it. And so last summer.
Just for somebody who's watching.
Right, the graphic.
The graphic is, the green or darker green is better coverage and.
That's right.
The greener it is, the better the coverage.
Brighter green.
The, the light green is the coverage.
Right.
The light green is the coverage. And the dark areas are dark areas.
Gaps, yeah.
Yeah, darker, less than reliable.
Less than reliable.
And this, this map is specific to Verizon, actually.
Oh, good, good. Good to know.
That's, that's a sort of useful information.
Yeah. And, and also understand that, you know, you could be inside a building, lower floors, coverage is going to be impacted. So it's, it's, it's just not as, there's hot and cold spots.
Right. So those, and those yellow pins in there are where Verizon has a tower.
Correct.
Right.
And so, oh, sorry, go ahead. No, I was going to say, in that area that's dark right now, is that sort of the Emerson, is that the field? I'm just trying to figure out, just for the.
The train station here.
Yep, yep. With the large.
And then Rotary is up, up at the top here, so it kind of orients you.
Yeah, so for example, where the number 62 is in the middle.
62.
That is.
Route 62, right.
That, that, that is essentially the Central Street neighborhood of West Concord, right below that. And Thoreau School is, is right in that dark patch. And that sort of snaking black line is really the river.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Going through there. So, you know, the, really, that's by way of pointing out, and you could see the MBTA station is barely covered. And the business district are actually in the gray, not the green part of this. Which is why, yes, there's a fair amount of coverage in West Concord. But if you look at the coverage and you overlay this with where the people actually are, you'd, you'd find that it's, it's actually, you know, not, not a great experience because that's one of the densest neighborhoods in town, actually.
Right, right.
Very poor coverage.
So last summer, we asked Ivan to do an analysis for properties that we own in West Concord to see where, you know, before we get into any other constraints, where could actually move the needle for coverage. And so, so Ivan did that. And we kind of picked it up again this summer as we had these other projects moving forward in these other areas. And the two areas that came out on top that we own are Harvey Wheeler Community Center and Ride Out Park. And I, I mentioned this at a previous update, but if you could go to the next slide here. Just see us up in the cupola at Harvey Wheeler. And this location, you know, is actually pretty big in there. And you could, you could fit infrastructure. We did run into some concerns looking for where we could put ground-mounted equipment. And this is equipment that needs to be accessible by the carriers. So it's challenging to put it inside the building because then they'd have to have kind of all the time access to. 24/7 access to the building. We were looking at, you know, the outside of the, of the building. It is, it is fairly tight there. The parking is shared with other uses. It is a historic district. There are some other constraints. But, you know, it's not off the table, but it's, 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 it's a location that could, could work. But definitely has some concerns about how we would fit the other equipment.
And sorry, could Harvey Wheeler support multiple carriers or is that a one carrier?
I don't think so.
No, not inside that cupola, no.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's, yeah.
Right.
Seems like it's a one.
Right. It's attractive because it's screened, you know, that, that goes a long way. But yeah, that's a good point.
I was thinking out loud though, isn't 55 Church Street almost as tall as Harvey Wheeler?
The one at the church across the way?
The, the town on building across the parking lot.
Oh. Hmm, I don't think, it's not as tall as the tower.
Not, not as the tower.
We were up there.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's up there.
It's on a little hill.
Yeah, but the, okay.
What, you say 55 Church Street?
Yeah.
Across the parking lot.
Right across the parking lot. That's where we have town offices now. And I think we built a yoga studio in the, in the.
Are you thinking for equipment supporting?
It, it actually is lower.
It is lower?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You could put, I, I should quantify, if you wanted to put something on the building, it's lower. If you, you know, put a pole there, okay, different story. But I was trying to
Yeah, okay.
Balance.
So the next spot we took a look at is Ride Out Park. And really, this does offer technical potent, the, the greater technical potential, giving the existing power and fiber that's there and the coverage that, that a monopole could provide. So when Ivan and I went out there this August, and Ivan, you can speak to this, but we, we were looking at the flagpole. And some, some of the carriers and tower companies these days are using flagpoles to be a monopole and put infrastructure inside of it. And they also need, as we mentioned, some type of ground-mounted equipment. And as you can see in this picture, and I probably don't have it. And as you can see in this picture, and I probably don't have it exactly right, but if you're, if you're looking at the flagpole and you turn around, then you're looking at those two sheds. And so one is a restroom and electrical facility and the other one is more of a shed. So, you know, the, the thought was, a concept could be that we could have a shed there that would host the, the ground mounted equipment, could also have a space for additional storage for the area. And the top, this top left or top right picture shows kind of the, the fiber and the electricity going into the building right there. So everything is, is pretty close. And the next picture is a, a Google image of Plymouth. And so, you know, I think it's come up a lot lately, what, what does this really look like? And so this is one example that Ivan sent to us. This is a one carrier monopole in Plymouth, Massachusetts. So there's just, there's one carrier in there, but that, there is infrastructure. And I believe, Ivan, you said that they do have their infrastructure inside their buildings. So they must have twenty-four acts, twenty-four hour access to the, the town hall. I'm not sure if they have like a separate basement.
Separate entrance, right.
So how much of the infrastructure, so going back to Ride Out, the other picture with the little shed that's there, there's a shed there now, do we need an additional shed? I mean, how, because people are just concerned about taking up space in that area.
No, absolutely. And I think if I, I just have a couple more slides and I'll touch base on that.
As long as we get back.
Yes. And so the next slide down, you know, thinking about, the reason I wanted to come here today is to think about next steps with you all. And so, you know, with Ivan's work, we've determined that Ride Out could, could be an option technically. But does it have community support and is it, is it of interest to carriers? You know, I think we need to, to investigate that a little bit more. So the next slide, I did choose a picture where people were smiling from the rec commission meeting the other day. But, you know, I, I was invited to attend the rec commission meeting earlier this month and the commission was very patient with me as I ran through a similar presentation to this. They provided a lot of helpful feedback. And, you know, I'm hearing concerns about aesthetics, the use of the park and how pedestrians access the park, all completely valid questions. And these are questions that we don't have full answers for how it would work yet because we don't have a project yet. And so I wa, I wanted to mention the process we went through for the tower, which is different because it's on municipal property, the landfill tower. And really the main stakeholder was Public Works because we, we got a project through a request for proposals, we selected a vendor, and then we had a lot of really detailed technical discussions with maps, looking at how does Public Works use the site? Where do they put their storage? Could we move the footprint over, you know, a little bit to the, to the west? And really kind of drilling down on how the site could be the most functional for all the parties involved. And so, you know, that is, I, I, when we're thinking about Ride Out and we're thinking about what would be acceptable, I think there needs to be a lot more conversations about the concerns that people have. What could, what could be something that, that the community would be okay with, you know? I think that, that, that conversation is just starting. But the other piece, I think on the last slide, is, is their interest from carriers. And so we have Ivan here today to talk a little bit more about this. But right now, we don't have interest from carriers in West Concord. And they're very, my understanding with, is carriers, is that they're very, keep very tight to their strategic goals. And right now, West Concord, West Concord was on the map for them for a while. They did not see progress in, in their effort. And so they have shifted to other areas. And now, now that we're kind of back looking at West Concord, we're saying, what about this? What about this? You know, are you interested? And they're, they're saying, it's not on our radar right now, kind of come back in, in a future year when they redo their priorities. So, and Ivan can talk more about this, but preparing a request for proposal for, you know, consideration in the spring is a way to test the market. It wouldn't be a commitment to a project, but it would see if carriers are interested. We could learn more about the types of equipment. We could learn more about, you know, kind of how it would work on the site, what their proposals would be. I wouldn't say, I don't want to use a double negative here, but it's not that, if we did an R F P, it's not that we wouldn't consider a project, but a lot of things would need to align for the, for the community to consider moving forward. And, but it would be one way to see if, you know, if the carriers would be interested in pursuing this site, which we don't. We know that this is their search ring, the circle here. This is a Verizon drawing from a few years ago. And, you know, my understanding is you want to be closer to the center, which this location is. It's harder to be on the outskirts for, for them to be excited about a location. But I think your, to your question, Wendy, we don't know exactly the specs of the equipment, you know, we, of what it would be like. But if we were to hear from the community about the critical requirements and design a request for proposals with that in mind and see if we were to get what we were looking for, you know, that might be a step in, in, in the right direction.
Megan, are the, the monopoles, can they be multi-carrier monopoles or is it a single carrier?
Not, for Ride Out, it's single.
Single.
Singles.
Right.
Okay, see, it won't be a third party doing the poll, it'll be the carrier.
Right, it'll be a carrier, correct.
Megan, did you just say you want community input before you do the R F P so that you know what you-
Yeah. And I think we're starting that conversation. You know, I, I went to the rec commission, it wouldn't be, it won't be the last time, but going to the West Concord Advisory Committee next week, I asked, you know, the chair to discuss this with you to make sure we're on the right path here and, and that you're comfortable pursuing continued conversation about this. Because if there are ma, you know, if not, then it'd just be helpful to know, you know?
So, so, I'm sorry, there's a flagpole there today?
Yes.
So you'd be replacing a flagpole?
With a taller flagpole.
Taller flag, and, and-
Probably wider.
And equipment.
wider diameter.
Right.
Right.
What would be all of the-
What would be different?
-community opposition?
Well, it was, I mean, at the Ride Out, Ride Out at the Recreation Commission, there was a discussion about an additional sort of storage unit. And people are concerned in that particular area, there's a lot of events near that tent and what does that mean? And we don't have the answers to that, which is Megan's point, which is why you want to look in a little more detail. So, and, you know, people weren't necessarily opposed to it, they prefer it someplace else, but they really just, it was the logistics of that site that they wanted to hear more about.
It's ironic that one of the things that is intruding there is something that the actual, the rec commission installed as an amenity for recreation not too many years ago. It's kind of ironic.
So, I mean, not, not to try to unpack the whole thing, but I just, my, because my concern would be, let's do an R F P, let's send out an R F P and carriers are like, we don't know if they're serious. Well, oh, we'll send you an R F P, but there may be a lot of community opposition to this. So do you want to bid on it? No, actually, I'm not interested.
Well, this is why Megan was trying to get more insight.
Yeah, so that was my only reason for, like, and if it's town owned property, I'm, I don't want to be, you know, blind eyes and ears to what the community thinks, but I'm also a little bit sort of like, you got to put these things someplace.
They do have to go somewhere.
Right, right.
And I mean, we're talking about the equipment shed even for like the one at the macro tower at a Nurse Neck Hill is basically twenty by fifteen. It's a three hundred square foot shed. You know, it's not, not huge, so it's already sheds on that property. But, you know, I think if we polled people and especially people who were trying to make calls or keep tracks of their lives while they're watching games on Ride Out, we'd find very quickly that there's, there's an interest, we're certainly hearing it.
I think, if you don't mind, to Cameron's point, you know, the, the umbrella project, the R F P went out a number of times. There was a project in twenty seventeen and then that failed because of community concerns. Then there were, there was another one that didn't get a responsive proposal and then, and then a third. And it, and I think the conversation around where to, where to locate infrastructure in the center has been going on for, for a long time. And, and I think there's value in people thinking about where a good location is and weighing in and, and coming to hearings. And I think West Concord, this is a little newer. I mean, it's been on the list, but I don't think there has been a lot of serious, unless I'm, you know, I don't know, in the last couple of years, missing conversations about really citing where, where it could go as a location. So I think we're just earlier in this process and I think people are hearing about it and reading about it and thinking about what it would mean for their neighborhood. And so I think we're just a little bit earlier.
Since with the outreach you're doing, you're making really good progress because, you know, there's an anxiety, a cell tower.
Yeah, it's not a cell tower.
Right?
It's a monopole, yep.
Well, that, so check that one off. That lowers some anxiety. And there are sheds on those properties, I think. And, and there's space that's not used for recreation, but, you know, this could, so I think the more you talk to the stakeholders, I think the comfort level will go up really quickly, I think, I hope.
And you could design those, those equipment enclosures to be architecturally pleasing to blend in with the character.
Blend in with the existing shed that you have.
You actually, you actually can have a, a large enough shed with two entrances and the town can get its own space, brand new for, for its uses.
So I don't, I mean, to be clear, I don't want to eliminate people's voices and feedback. I just, I'm trying to balance that with something that carriers can be excited about and respond to.
Yeah.
But say, hey, this has some, you know, backing, if you will.
But, but I think we have heard from people already. I mean, to your point, we don't, we have gone through a process where we've gotten feedback, we had the hearing. We've talked, we've been talking about this for years. It's been a select board goal now, I think, two years in a row. So I'm sensing some impatience-
Okay.
-with the whole process. So I, I, I think going out and talking to other committees is a good idea, as long as it doesn't slow things down even more.
That's helpful.
Yeah, I think so. I think we should move forward.
Right. I, I agree. I think that we've made it a goal. We've heard loud and clear certainly that, that service is an issue in lots of places in town and especially in, in the center of West Concord. Particularly, you know, some carriers more than others, but I think we should, you know, if people want to write to us and let us know that they feel differently-
They will.
Please do. However-
As far as coverage, if we had to choose one carrier versus another to complete the coverage, without mentioning a carrier here, would there be a preferred carrier from?
In the R F P process, the carrier that wants it the most is going to win the hard pick.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And it's all, it's all based on time.
Our need, their need would probably be, well, yeah.
Exactly. And, and carriers set up their, their build outs well in advance. You know, next year's build out is already determined. And the search rings that you see, it's driven by, you know, market data, dropped calls, coverage complaints, et cetera, et cetera, demographics and whatnot. So as Megan said, West Concord was, the, one carrier had particular interest in West Concord. Things weren't happening, they took that priority, took that budget for equipment and moved it to a place that they could actually build.
I wonder how often individuals complain about coverage? I just, you know, the drop call is just, the drop call, you make a complaint?
How they, how they get that data is churn rate.
Turnover, yeah.
They, they look at, you know, I'm with this carrier. Now, it could be price sensitive and whatnot, but they look at that data and the two things that kill carriers are, are coverage and churn. They-
Yep. Makes sense.
That kills their business model.
Yeah, I think by putting these projects in a row and moving them through our pipeline, we're doing the other thing that you mentioned early, which is somewhat changing the reputation of Concord from a, from a town that's going to push back and block these projects-
Great point.
-to a town that's going to get these projects done if they're proposed. And I, and, you know, I think that, that's certainly what I want to see done.
Me too. Absolutely.
Right.
So do you need anything for us?
No, I, I just, thank you so much for the conversation and for the feedback. I think I've heard that we will continue to meet with community members on this. And when we have a request for proposal that goes out in the spring, it will be, you know, take those into consideration to design a project that, that meets all of our goals for coverage and use of this, you know, really critical recreation facility.
Yeah.
What is the outreach strategy, going to West Concord Advisory Council then?
Yeah, I mean, I've been meeting with residents, you know, when, when they ask, but, you know, to, I haven't developed a full, a full strategy, but I'm, I'm, I will definitely take a look at all our boards and committees and, and also ask people to watch this, you know? Look back at this conversation and the Recreation Commission.
Thoreau School P T G.
Okay.
Really good, because that's a dead zone.
Oh, that's true. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Thoreau School P T G.
Okay, sure.
Shouldn't mention the school, if that shares breakfast, if people-
Yeah.
And, you know, that search ring that we were just looking at both includes the M C I site-
Right.
And the, you know, Novo Riverside forty B site. So we're talking about how, having an active conversation about more housing right inside that area. And if you look at the coverage maps in that area, it's not particularly good.
Which may also help prioritize the carrier's interest.
Yes.
So yeah, let's, let's make it happen.
Okay.
Really.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. Okay. I don't think we need to vote on that either, so we're ready to get into one of your favorite topics and mine, food trucks.
Yes.
And we're remarkably close on time.
Really?
Is Mimi here or are you also wearing that hat tonight?
We have Marty here.
Oh, hi, Marty.
Yep.
Hi, come on up so that they can hear you.
Hi, I'm Marty Hutchinson. I am a rec supervisor with Concord Recreation.
Hi.
Hi.
And I kind of oversee the tree lighting. So, yeah, so the hope was to have three food trucks again this year. It was very successful last year and I'm hoping to do that again.
Great.
That's great.
And I recall, we had them last year, it worked out well, there were no issues-
Sure did, yeah.
-with the number of trucks, with the locations. Are you putting them in the same places?
Yeah, I was going to say, where, where are they going?
I'm kind of rinse and repeat kind of gal if it works. So, yeah. Yep, they were right, you know, right in front of the-
Oh, that's right.
Yep. And we had three last year and three was great, two food, one, one dessert-y. They're all already approved from the Board of Health.
Are the same people coming back? The same trucks?
Um, no, actually, well, yes, one. So the Whoopi wagon is coming back with the Whoopi pies.
Okay.
And the other two trolley dogs. So I was in charge of the food trucks for the two fifty. So I was back there all day and trolley dogs really had a great following. So I asked them to come this year. And then Northeast Barbecue, who has worked with us for a, a long time, has been doing a lot of our events. of our events. So, yeah, I try to pick from the list of already-approved people so that I don't have to chase them down, but I talked to Melanie this morning, and these guys are all set.
Wonderful.
Very good.
Thanks.
All right.
And thank you for squeezing me in.
Oh, no problem. We'll, you know, make a note for future years to just, you know, have the food truck for the holiday tree lighting.
Thank you.
Right.
For November, because many things municipal can be scheduled by the calendar. Okay.
So this says move to approve more than two food trucks. Is that the language we want, or is it to move to approve three food trucks?
Because we have to vote if there's more than two, right? Isn't that?
Right.
Yeah, but do you want to specify three?
Yeah, should we say move? I'm going to make a motion that we move to approve three food trucks at the town tree lighting on December seventh, 2025.
Do you want more?
Are we guaranteed that it's just three? Could you use more?
Yes, we will not add any more.
Okay.
Okay.
So second.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? Thanks for that adjustment, I think that's a good one. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
It's a good, it's a good day.
It's great. Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. The next thing we had on our agenda was to just revisit the antisemitism and bias initiatives. And I, you know, I made the commitment that we were going to talk about this every time until we made progress. We have the work groups spinning up in a week or so.
The sixth.
The sixth, about a week, a week from tomorrow, from Thursday.
Yep.
And we've, I know that there are some things around community groups in the work for some additional public outreach, and I just wanted to, you know, open the floor for any opportunities for comments on what we should be doing or could be doing to move this any further. And we don't need to have, if there's not a lot to discuss, then we don't need to have a long discussion about this, and we can get on to other things. So I do know we're on the clock tonight.
I just had a question about, just from an awareness perspective, the DEI Commission is also planning some outreach, but I don't know what they're doing.
So.
Do we have any updates?
Yeah, we do. One of the things that they're, that they're working on is a website update that's going to provide existing resources that are in the community, and I believe that that is pretty much ready to go. I'm looking at Paul because he was out.
Brian Farber's leaving an effort to actually put QR codes and work with the business, sort of in terms of, you know, if you have to report or.
Okay.
A complaint or a need to talk with somebody, the QR code is communication.
Yeah, what's available today.
Yeah, so it's current state? Okay, just make sure that.
That's what's available.
Okay.
Yeah. And there are a number of education programs that are in the work, works from different groups, and I think we'll be hearing some requests to help to co-sponsor some of those in the coming weeks. But I don't have anything really specific to announce right now. So, that's.
One other thing, I think I mentioned the last liaison report, the DEI Commission's moving forward on creating an advisory group of some sort of high school students from CCHS and perhaps from Middlesex and Concord Academy to come to meetings and to be part of the conversation.
Great.
So they're trying to link up with schools as well as the town efforts.
Right.
Great.
Okay. All right. I think maybe that'll cover that. I'd like to leave a little bit of time for us to do the executive session before Wendy has to leave.
Wendy has to go, right.
Right. So is there anything on liaison reports that anybody wants to specifically cover?
Not me.
Okay.
No.
No?
It was, I'll just comment, there was this very successful public forum on the Ride Out resurfacing, a lot of people participated.
Oh, good.
So, it was very good.
Good.
I just had a question, kind of liaison, I almost got run over by an electric bike on the Bruce Freeman rail trail under power. And what are our reg, I know there's supposed, no motorized vehicles, but does that include electric bikes under power?
So, I'm not going to, I don't, I'm not an expert, but what I understand is there is a state thing that allows on paved roads the use of e-bikes up to like, I think it's like twenty-seven miles an hour.
But paved roads, that includes?
Well, like trails and stuff like that.
It does.
And so it's kind of a state law that allows those. And I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm going to get out of my depth, I'm not sure that a town can sort of override and say, hey, I'm sorry, too bad, but we're going to, you know, come up with our own rules on that.
I heard that same.
But I know it's been a subject of some discussion in.
Yeah.
From my, from my sort of general reading on the subject, this is an issue that's coming to the forefront in a lot of places, especially in cities. I think that New York City is considering a city ordinance that's going to limit e-bikes to twenty miles an hour because of the same sort of thing. They're sort of allowed everywhere because they have pedals on them, like a bicycle, and yet there's a lot of places where it's clearly inappropriate to be operating them at the kind of speeds that they can operate. And I think it's something that's, you know, becoming a more and more apparent kind of concern. And it's in a scene, because as soon as you make something universally accessible, you've